Order. Roll call.
Trustee Oppenheim. Trustee Forster.
Here.
Trustee Schenk.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
Trustees Marquardt and Takaoka gave prior notice that they would not be in attendance. And President Byrne.
Aye, here. Okay. All right, we have a core and present. Uh, let everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance. Okay, um, there are motion to appoint, uh, trustee Cook to the president's home team.
Come in.
There's a second.
Second.
Motion is second, roll call.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. Uh, first thing on the agenda is citizens wishing to address the board. Come on in.
Chris Meyer, I know these comments are a little bit late, but I've been out of town and I missed a couple of meetings because of date changes. I just wanted to thank the board and the committee for the excellent Fourth of July, uh, parade and the fireworks. But I had just had one suggestion. The bands, when they, I sit near the fire station, right at the beginning of the parade, in front of charter. And when the bands come out, except for the pipe band, which I was thrilled, none of them begins their music until they're much farther down deer path. With charter and the people, uh, the memory care people who love to sit in front of charter and watch the parade, music is a soothing influence on them, and I thought it might be a good suggestion to have the bands start playing as soon as they come off, uh, the congregation area. But otherwise, it was a great parade. Uh, thank you.
We'll have John make note of that. Thank you. Any other citizens wishing to address the board? Okay, we have nothing under the president or village manager reports tonight, correct? So assistant village manager, village marketing update?
Good evening, everyone. We hope everybody had a great holiday weekend, and as we conclude summer, we thought this would be the perfect opportunity to highlight some of the marketing that has occurred for the village of Vernon Hills, and more specifically its businesses over the course of this past summer. Visit Lake County is the destination marketing organization and champion of tourism for Lake County, and Vernon Hills is one of thirteen community partners to comprise of Visit Lake County, and we are joined by over two hundred hospitality partners, including our hotels, restaurants, and various attractions, all who have the united purpose of encouraging persons to visit, shop, dine, and experience local businesses here in Vernon Hills. Tonight's presentation is intended to highlight Visit Lake County marketing initiatives that focused primarily on promoting Vernon Hills. Peter Vernon Hills, several stakeholders or partners, including Bears Fit, Hawthorne Mall, the Soccer Events Group, Lacrosse America, along with entities that include White Deer Run, our local hotels, numerous restaurants who all participate with Visit Lake County. We start each year by promoting restaurants with the campaign Restaurant Week. This campaign provides promotion to participating restaurants as we emerge from winter and head into spring. To kick off summer, Vernon Hills hosts the Pipe City Lacrosse Tournament in early July. This tournament is organized by the Soccer Events Group, a Visit Lake County member, and can accommodate up to five hundred teams, and brings players and their families from across the United States to beautiful Vernon Hills. This event greatly benefits the local hospitality sector, and event organizers estimate the larger tournaments have an economic impact between three and four million dollars to the local economy. This is followed by Vernon Hills Days and later Rib Fest, which Visit Lake County helps to promote and market. Recently, the partnership between Visit Lake County and Hawthorne Mall supported the Chicago Bears in their training camp at Hollis Hall during select dates in July and August. Bears Training Camp ran from July twenty-sixth through August fourteenth and provided thirteen dates in which fans could experience a Bears' practice at Hollis Hall. The Bears shared that fans came from over thirty-one states to attend training camp, and we know this benefits area hotels, restaurants, and more. We also know that visitors start their journey to training camp by coming to Vernon Hills, and after camp, they return by bus to Vernon Hills, where hopefully persons are enjoying our dining options, our retail sector, and more. For fans who did not get an opportunity to attend a practice, we have some images of the fan experience, including Hollis Hall. So this is what it looks like, uh, to start the day at about seven o'clock, the buses line the outer drive at the mall. And you'll see the line extends all the way back to both Macy's and J.C. Penney. You can see a theme here where there's a certain jersey that seemed to be most popular among fans. And this is what it looks like when the fans arrive at Hollis Hall, uh, getting off and making the trek towards the field. Lots of fan engagement opportunities. Picture of Hollis Hall. And this is what some of the VIP seating looks like. And you'll see there's number one. And you can see the number of fans that all attend and participate in this event. It's a great experience. More of the VIP seating, some of the fans waiting to engage with players. Again, that event greatly benefits the Vernon Hills business community by having over thirteen hundred, it's estimated that fifteen to seventeen hundred fans were ticketed, uh, with a capacity of thirteen hundred fans being inside the field, visiting over a series of, uh, dates in July and August. That's what it's all about right there, hopefully pursued of at this year. Over Labor Day weekend, Vernon Hills hosted the Chicago Cup, a soccer tournament conducted by the Soccer Events Group, which is promoted by Visit Lake County. U-sports and tournaments continue to be a growing market for tourism that greatly supports the hospitality sector. This past weekend, the V-HAC hosted two hundred and sixty teams for the Chicago Cup, and there's an estimated two million dollar plus economic impact to the local economy from this single event. More images of the fans and the families. Visit Lake County also created a promotion known as Let the Ride Take You, which encourages road trips throughout the summer and into specific Lake County communities for the fall. The Lake County Road Trips Campaign showcased five different experiences via car to create a driving adventure. The Route Twenty-One Road Trip showcased, showcase encourages visitors to experience the best of Libertyville and Vernon Hills. Included in this campaign is an adventure that features nearby Lake County forest preserves, many of our local restaurants, shopping options at Hawthorne Mall and Melody Farms, and restaurants to include Jamison's, Feather Glass Wine Bar and Eatery, and venues that include White Deer Run and Whirly Ball. As a reminder to close the year, Visit Lake County coordinates the Holiday Your Way campaign, which highlights the village's retail sector, our dining options, and more. This campaign is intended to encourage people from out of our market to visit and experience venues that include Hawthorne, Melody Farms, and our entire commercial corridor. Regarding analytics and performance of these marketing campaigns, Visit Lake County partners with the state and other convention bureaus and uses a program to capture tourism data and visitor trends. The company used is called Zartico, and they're able to collect data from mobile phones in which users have their location apps activated. To be counted as a visitor on this specific data collection application, persons must have traveled from outside our market, which is defined by more than fifty miles from a point of origin to a destination point in Lake County. And again, travelers must have a mobile device with their location apps activated. The slide here from the second quarter of this year identifies what the top points of interest were in Lake County. And we can see that Hawthorne Mall and Melody Farm are in the top ten and currently well-positioned. Now, the graphics are a little hard to read, but for those at home, uh, you can see we're in the top five. Other destinations obviously include, uh, things like forest preserves, uh, Illinois beaches, and more. Does anybody want to guess what the number one restaurant was in Lake County during the second quarter of twenty thirteen? I'm sorry, twenty twenty-three?
Portillo.
What was the question?
Portillo's.
Absolutely, Dr. O. The Vernon Hills Portillo's was the number one visited restaurant in Lake County in the second quarter and, uh... This next slide reveals what sectors persons are frequenting, and we can see that retail is still the top, which is good for Vernon Hills, followed by accommodations, outdoor recreation, which would include the V-HAC, followed by food and community events. The visitor analytics for the months of July, August, and September will be available later this year, and we look forward to seeing how these summer events and Visit Lake County promotions supported and benefited the Vernon Hills business community. Uh, when I get that slide, I will give it to Kevin, and he can send it to the trustees for one of his updates. Uh, we are hopeful that the Vernon Hills hospitality sector thrive this summer, and we're hopeful that all the marketing efforts, uh, conducted by Visit Lake County, uh, benefited the Vernon Hills business community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and our thanks to Visit Lake County, they've been a good partner. Uh, so have the Bears, that been, that was another good year with this, I heard a lot of people comment on it. Okay. Are the others talking parts, or are we, do we have any, are these just the attachments, or, oh, okay, so Finance Director, Treacher?
Yes, sir. Okay. All right, thank you. Included in your board packet tonight is, uh, two reports from Finance, Investment Portfolio Report, as well as the Cash and Investment Balance Report. Uh, the Investment Portfolio Report is new to the board, so I wanted to take a few minutes and, and walk through that report. Um, so before I jump into that report, I just want to add some context in why we have expanded and developed the Investment Report to where it is today. So if we flashback to April twenty-three, I presented to the board Treasury and Investment Management Presentation, basically identifying our cash and investment balances currently. If you look at the left bar chart there called current, that was as of January twenty-three. The top sliver at the top there, uh, just over four million dollars was the core investment balance. And then, as recommended, to expand into fiscal twenty-four target was to bump that up to around twenty-five million dollars so we can maximize the, the return on the available cash balances. And as you see through the report as we go here, you'll see that we were able to expand to that level. Another important piece adopted by the board in May was the current investment policy. Uh, I just want to reiterate the three, three main objectives of that policy. Safety of principal is the foremost objective of the program, followed by liquidity. Can our investment portfolio provide supplemental liquidity to operations as needed? And then return, are we, is the portfolio obtaining a market rate of return? And as I walk through again, we'll, I'll show you some key data points which will help us identify how we're doing with the objectives. So jumping into the report, um, aside from tick marks and definitions, there's four main categories of this report. The first being the summary, which is a one-page summary of the portfolio with a lot of key data points. Uh, as we move down into cash flows, it just gets further details, and then holdings and transactions are included for really transparency. Uh, but the holdings will show all the investments held at, in the portfolio, as well as all the transactions that occurred during the quarter. Breaking down the portfolio summary, um, on the table on the left, portfolio characteristics, so starting at the top there, the par value of the portfolio is just under twenty-six million dollars. Uh, what, what this means, the par value is essentially the value in which we're expecting back at maturity of the investments. The next line down is market value, this is what they're priced at today. Uh, and if we were to liquidate the portfolio, this is what we would get. Now, there's no plan to liquidate the portfolio, no need, and that's not in the, uh, that's not... We just have to mark the, to mark accounting, and that's where the market value piece comes in. We move three lines down to book value, book value is essentially the cost of the portfolio. So you may note, uh, the book value at twenty-five point six million is above the market value of twenty-five point two. This indicates a, an unrealized loss in the, the market value of the portfolio. I'm going to touch on this in a minute, but just wanted to point that out. Uh, the weighted average maturity of the portfolio is just under two and a half years, and the book yield is just under four point eight percent, which is essentially a yield to maturity. If we move to the right under benchmarks, we have a heading called Three Y R T S Y, this is a three-year treasury. Um, I've added this in here for comparison purposes to let us know how our portfolio is doing compared to the market in that case. So this will help us determine, are we receiving a market rate of return? Uh, in my, in my opinion, we are. But if this book yield on the portfolio were to be a one or two percent above the benchmark or below, we'd want to understand why that is. Moving to the right, Illinois Funds, the book yield at five point four percent, this is what we can reinvest cash in at the moment, but this is a daily rate, so this changes with the interest rate markets. So it's not always going to be higher than the book yield of the portfolio. Moving to the right, the portfolio maturity, this just shows a five-year snapshot of when we expect par value to be returned to us. So not always the portfolio diversified by investment type, but also over time. Looking at investment allocation, this table on the left shows the different types of investments we have in the portfolio as a percentage of the whole portfolio value, as well as a max percent column, which was identified by the policy to limit various types of investments to those percentages. So this is a good table to review to make sure none of the categories have been overpurchased. Uh, the pie chart on the right just depicts the same information in a visual sense. Looking at the last piece of the portfolio summary tab, the investment activity, uh, the table on the left, we have three columns of data, quarter to date, fiscal year to date, and inception. Uh, the inception, I've started this basically in Q four of fiscal twenty-three, so we put a February one date on this. Uh, but if I direct your attention to the inception column, I'll walk you down that column. So beginning market value, about three point five million, and during that time through seven thirty-one, we've added twenty-two million of, of cash to the investment portfolio as described in the earlier slide. No withdrawals have been made to date. Now, this capital appreciation, this is what I mentioned I was going to talk about a minute ago. The capital appreciation is an unrealized loss, so this is the difference between the cost basis and the market value at the time of this report, seven thirty-one. Um, so this is unrealized loss, a function of the market to market accounting. Uh, the village practices a hold to maturity, so essentially if we hold all these investments to maturity, we will not realize any of this loss. So this is not a loss of principal, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Uh, the portfolio is still expected to earn over a million dollars over the next twelve months. Uh, moving down into income net expense, this is all the interest we were paid through the report date. And then change in accrued interest is interest we've earned but not yet paid to us, to end up with the market value at the end of twenty-five point four million. The line below, the bottom line, investment gain-loss is cumulative of, of the capital appreciation, income net expense, and the change in accrued interest for the total market, total investment gain or loss.
Tom, can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
So I'm not really, you know, obviously, personal, if there's capital gains, you're on a capital gain liability, tax liability. With the village municipalities, what's, is there no capital gain tax liabilities?
So it's all income tax-driven, and, and there is no income tax piece to the village municipality.
Okay.
So essentially, it's, it's just due to our accounting practices that we have to market to market and present, but really, our portfolio, we're holding to maturity. So we're going to get our principal back, plus all the interest paid over time.
And that interest doesn't affect, there's no exposure, there's no tax exposure on that interest?
There is not, not for a governmental entity.
What, what's the term for most of these CDs?
CDs?
Yeah. Didn't, didn't you say there were CDs for the...
There are CDs we have investments in, yes.
Yeah.
Um, the, oh, the term varies over between up to five years, so they're spread across zero to five years.
And, and those have withdrawal penalty?
Um...
Fully losing the interest, or, or are those...
So they're negotiable CDs, which means you can buy and sell them on secondary market. So if we were to go into a bank locally here and purchase a CD directly through the bank, that would be a non-negotiable CD in which, if we cashed it out prior to the maturity, there would be a penalty attached to that.
Right.
Now, on a negotiable CD, it's, it's adjusted with market. So if we buy a negotiable CD and we move forward five months, and the price of that CD has gone down below one hundred par, now we are going, we're going to get less back if we sell it early. So essentially, there's a penalty built into that, and likewise, the opposite. So if rates go down, and your CD could gain value, in which we'll gain, we'll get a, uh, additional, if we sell it before maturity.
More like a variable rate interest mortgage as opposed to a fixed rate type of analogy.
If you have to dabble around selling before maturity. But our plan is to hold these investments to maturity, which means it'll all play out regardless of where the market value goes.
Because I know they do sell some CDs that there is no penalty for early, early withdrawal, you just have to reinvest the...
Yep, those are more personal-focused CDs, and, and really, it's just a function of what rate they're going to give you.
Right.
So they may give you a lower rate to absorb some of that cashing out early potentially.
Okay.
Uh, and then moving to the portfolio quality table there, this shows that nine point seven million dollars of our portfolio is invested in issuers in, that have a credit quality of triple A. And the residual amount of the portfolio, sixteen point one million, is not rated. Now, this is all the CDs. So CDs are covered by bank up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So the practice again here is to make sure we invest at two fifty or less into these to make sure we maximize the insurance. So a hundred percent of our portfolio on CDs are covered under FDSC insurance or equivalent, and then the remainder portfolios invested in triple A securities. So this is another piece to help solidify that safety of principal is our number one priority. Moving on to expected cash flows, this is the, uh, expected cash flows over the next twelve months. Again, this is not just principal, but interest and principal as well. Um, and this just goes to show that throughout the year, if needed, the investment portfolio can help support operations with available cash, which is another one of the objectives of the portfolio, liquidity. And you might wonder why this says expected cash flows rather than known, or why don't we know them exactly? Well, we invest in, some of our investments include callable bonds and, and callable securities, which means, uh, there's a mechanism built in for the issuers to be able to call the bonds back prior to maturity, which could throw a wrench in understanding where that cash flow is going to come back into the village. Uh, but it's a small portion of our portfolio, and we just track it with what, what we expect to see coming back to us based on the current environment of interest rates. Uh, and then we also show here if, if our whole portfolio was held to maturity, that the gray bar would show our cash flows, and then if everything that could be called was called on the next available call date, which is not likely, but it's up here, that will be shown as cash flows in the yellow bar. So the key takeaways here is just that the investment portfolio can support operational needs, uh, going, again, going back to that, uh, objective of the investment policy, and that the owning of callable investments can shift the expected cash flows around depending on the interest rate environment. Last couple sections of the report are really just, uh, to keep everyone informed if they want to go through the detail, but this, the portfolio holdings includes every single holding we have at, as of seven thirty-one, with various data points there. And then the portfolio transactions include every single transaction that happened in the quarter in the portfolio. And then where does this report fit in with the overall financial reporting plan? Uh, again, on a monthly basis, I'm providing cash and investment balance report to the board, and I, I think we were a few months into that. And then at a quarterly, uh, aspect, we're looking at a budget versus actual report, which I'm currently working on. This will show us our budget and actual, uh, actual expense and actual revenues throughout the year as we go, as well as that cash and investment balance report, and this investment portfolio report. Uh, key reporting timeline targets for me to the board. Uh, monthly reporting, I want to get these out to, to the board forty-five days after a month closed, and then quarterly reporting about sixty days after a month closed. Not there yet, but those are my targets. And again, around year-end, April and the Q four may be delayed a little bit because there's a little bit more, uh, year-end closing process. Uh, but that's, that's all I have. If there's any questions or comments, I'd be happy to take them now.
Any questions for the board? Mike?
Yes, thank you. Under U.S. agencies, are those, what are those assets?
Those are going to be, um, Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac-type, uh, U.S. agencies, which, uh, like Jenny Mays are, we don't have any Jenny Mays, but those are explicitly guaranteed by the U.S. government. However, Fannie Mays and Freddie Macs, federal home loan banks, those are implicitly, uh, covered by the U.S. government, but there's nothing in writing saying they a hundred percent guarantee that.
Are, are we using a broker to make these?
Yes.
And what's their commission?
Yep. So if you recall, um, earlier in the year, we had approved the four different brokers in which I try to cycle different purchases around, I'm able to talk with them with various, uh, various insight into what we're purchasing and understanding, and, and I like to work with multiple brokers so I wouldn't get different perspectives.
What, so I, I may have been out on medical for that, so I wasn't sure if it was earlier in the year. So when you work your commissions then with them, do you put that into your numbers here?
Yeah, everything is built in, so this is, take away all the costs that are involved here. But the broker, the brokers make their money, specific on CDs, they get a certain set amount with the issuing bank, so they coordinate all of that. And then anything we, we don't pay anything directly for that, it's just, they make it up in the spread of the investment, bid and ask prices.
And you, you find these brokers from past experience, or when you're looking for a certain asset, how do you find these brokers? Forgive me, like I said, I may have been out.
So I vetted brokers with past experience and my colleagues to get us started, and then I went through, we have a, a few things we ask for from each broker, financials, how their process works, what's their interface, and, and things like that. So I'm, I'm somewhat interview them, and then we have a list that I present to the board for approval, and then those are the brokers we can formally use throughout the year.
And my last question, Tom, um, when you were at your previous location, how, did, did you come in when this was already happening? Or you, you started it there too, if I'm correct, right?
So I, yeah, I started.
Like building their investment portfolio, and how many years did you, did you work on that investment portfolio?
We were only months in there on developing that whole plan, and we, we were utilizing, uh, an investment manager, which is additional fees on top of whatever else you would do.
Okay. All right, thank you, Tom.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
Can I ask, why, why do you use these U.S. agencies? I see that the yield is significantly lower than the CDs.
So I'm not sure, there, there are different yields on these, and, and there's, it's hard, if there's, is there a specific line on there that you were looking at?
Uh, let's see, well, I'm in the, I'm looking at the full report on here, and it's page five. Pretty much, at least half of them have only, there, there are one percent versus all the CDs are five, four and a half, five. So what, why bother with those?
Yep, so these, these are actually purchased at a deep discount. Um, so you can buy investments on new issues at par, let's say one hundred. And if they're par one hundred and the investment yield is one percent, let's say five years ago, that's when this was issued at one percent. Well, as interest rates increase, the price will then go down, it's an inverse relationship there. So over the last few years, a lot of these bonds were issued three, four, or five years ago. The interest rates have risen since, basically spiking these prices down on these bonds. So now we can purchase some of these one percenters at, say, maybe eighty-nine. Or, so we'll get the, if we hold that to maturity, we'll get the principal plus that coupon of one percent. So the effective rate is still between the four and five percent.
Gotcha.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. So what, can you list the, do you have effective rate listed, though?
I do not have effective.
Estimated and effective rate, because that would be helpful to know.
Yeah, it would. Okay.
Because we only see the, we only see, you know, the, the regular interest rate, but not, not, not the discount that you paid and what, uh, how much we expect in that from it.
Uh, let me look in to see how I can get that incorporated, if that, if that's something that's feasible. Um, another way to look at this also is under the transactions. If you do look at those particular Qsips or description of, you'll see what we paid for those. Um, so for example, on page...
Page seven.
Page seven, yeah, maybe fifteen lines down, you'll see a bunch of FHLBs.
FHLB down.
So one percent, so you'll see that the par value is five hundred thousand, let's say.
Yeah.
And then one of those, we paid four hundred sixty-one dollars.
Okay.
So we're paying significantly lower than par, which means we're going to gain the difference back once this investment matures, plus the interest earned on the coupon.
Yeah, just adding an extra column.
Yeah, let me, let me see if I can get that in.
What the estimated...
Yeah.
Long-term rate would be.
Yep, no problem. Yep, no problem. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay. Anybody else on staff with the speaking part tonight? No? All right. The next item is omnibus vote agenda. Items A through K, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve items A through K on the omnibus.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any comments, questions about any of the items? Okay, hearing none then, roll call please.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye, motion carries. There's no unfinished additional business. Anybody have any new business or communications they would like to share with the board?
I know it's really Mike's purview, but I wanted to talk about AEDs. I can't remember, not related necessarily to what we just voted on or to the pickle mall, but I was playing pickleball at Deer Path the other day and I realized that there's no AED there. And I don't know if you've brought that up previously or not.
Well, that is definitely Park District and, you know, I think there's conversation right now starting to.
Have you spoken with them about?
We're not, not directly yet, but we're working on, in fact, my son was supposed to be working, he's in football season now, but to create some kind of either ordinance or just ask them to install them, like, you know, Gross Point. All the places are high activity, you know, Gross Point over here.
I was thinking if there's one place in the whole village that needs an AED, it's the pickleball court.
Yeah, a hundred, a hundred percent and.
With all the old people.
I can't imagine there'd be that much pushback, I think, when it's presented to them and the understanding.
I, I don't know what their budget is, but hopefully they have the funds from their budget. If not, then we can help them figure something out.
I think that's a great idea. In fact, I was at the high school the other day, the other night and they have them. But I was like looking at the placements of them and something that sparked me, I want to talk to them because they have them, but the placements just seem odd. You know, you want to near where the people congregate and stuff like that. Because if you were at the game, it was a, they called them the cardiac cougars. It was that exciting of a game on Friday and they won. In fact, my heart rate was like jumping. So I was like, where is it?
Yeah.
But I think the, the discussion for spring, I think, would be a great idea, target for the park districts, if not sooner.
Sooner, yeah.
If not sooner, so. Thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah.
As you know, big advocate.
So you'll, so you'll take care of that or are you in discussion with them already or?
Yeah.
Okay.
I got a good story to tell.
Yeah.
Okay. It's on our list. We got it.
Okay, perfect.
All right, anything else? Yeah, school year's off to a good start, both, interesting, the two high schools both in one twenty eight, both Burn Hills and Libertyville, in a recent article were ranked extremely high. You know, two of the top ten in all of the counties.
Do you know which poll that was? Was it the same one that we?
I think it had something to do with Newsweek, but I'm not certain where I got the actual story from. But it was picked up by a number of local news agencies.
Yeah.
So.
Certainly great to hear regardless of which poll, but I know there's one in particular that's right.
It was a US News and World Report.
That's what I thought.
So it is different than the other one, so that's, that's fantastic.
Okay, if, then if there's nothing else, we're going to go to committee of the whole and we will not have a closed session, correct? Okay, so is there a motion to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn, go to committee of the whole.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Right, we're adjourned. Back to you, Mayor.
Okay. I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting board. Is there a motion to appoint trustee Cook head of the committee?
Tell me. Are you going to do a roll call?
Yes, do a roll.
Is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Yep, with motion, a second.
Okay. Can we do it all in favor?
We'll do a roll call on this one. It's been our practice.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Markworth, I'm sorry, trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Okay, first item of business is the approval of the committee of the whole minutes of August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the committee of the whole minutes of August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second. Motion, a second. Any comments, questions, corrections? Okay, hearing none, a roll call please.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
President Byrne. President Byrne. Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. Second item of business is Taco Bell sign variations, seven hundred Milwaukee Avenue, unit one forty-eight. Director Jennings, this one's yours?
Yes, thank you. As the committee will recall, the Taco Bell special use and variations for the building itself and the site work were approved recently. The planning and zoning commission had continued the public hearing related to the sign variations and had a concern with the scope of the variations requested with the original petition. They had requested, the commission, planning commission had requested that the petitioner consider revising the sign package to reduce the, the amount of the very, the variations associated with the sign package. So the petitioner has done that. They are not able to attend tonight, so I'll do my best to explain what has happened. The variations that were remaining in the sign package relate to the logo sign on the west elevation that's not associated with the text. This was done at the suggestion of the commission to match the scope of variations approved in the past for an adjacent restaurant. The, the petitioner did make the revision as requested. They revised the sign package to eliminate the need for variations on the south elevation, removing the, the additional bell logo from this side of the building. And then they do also need a variation for the monument sign. The reason for that is that the bell logo is taller than the text and is wider than two letters. So they've removed probably six of the original eight variations. They're down to a much smaller number. Planning and zoning commission did recommend approval of this. And if the committee of the whole concurs with the commission's recommendation, staff is just requesting direction to prepare an ordinance to, to memorialize what the planning and zoning commission has recommended.
Yeah, this, the west side logo is, I mean, that is the major traffic side really, because that's where the street access is from the west side, so.
Facing the shopping center, correct?
Yeah.
So, so now it's just going to be the bell on the west side and there's no text?
There's no text on the west side. You see, as you approach, you do see the south and the west at the same time.
And it was just because of the size of it, they couldn't fit both of them and still be in compliance?
They could not. They, it was possible to do the, the bell and the text. The bell ends up being much smaller than what Taco Bell would prefer. And, and this was the compromise, is to display the logo on one side and the text on the other.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board?
So the purple, called banding around the building, exactly how is that lit? Is that purple light shining on a purple panel? Is it lit from behind? Is it white light shining on purple panel?
It is a purple, purple light shining on a purple panel. It was approved as part of the special use.
It was approved?
It was approved, subject to confirmation of the light level. So we are still actually waiting for them to provide confirmation of the lumen output. It is LED lights. They're hidden from view, so you get the effect of the lights, but you don't see the light source itself.
I know it was a, a question of how bright it's going to be. And I do know that there's a Taco Bell on forty-five and it's very dim, the purple. And the question is, is that something that was requested also? I mean, like, it seems so, so dim that it's almost, like, it's almost like me, I was a monoliner over there. They requested that to be dimmer too, so. Big and, big and bright is what we're trying to stay away from, I think, with something like this is what it sounds like. But I know it got approved by P and Z.
Yeah, so this, that, the special use did include that. We are, like I said, just waiting for them to, to demonstrate that the lumen output is minimal.
Okay, any other?
Can't remember, Mike. Were you, you, were you not at the last meeting here?
Yeah, I was, but I was just, I know that I was watching P and Z. I know that they approved in this stuff. I know there's talk about the purple.
Right. Well, I brought that up at the, at the last meeting, because I was concerned that it was going to be too bright and started.
Like Vegas style, exactly.
Yeah, bad.
And it was interesting, I also noticed, I think Andrew noticed too, like driving around at night in town, like you're trying to find like where is the balance? You know, because there's a lot of other stuff out there that's big and bright and there's stuff that's, I mean, it's up to us to see what's tasteful or not, I guess, right?
Yeah.
Well, the zoning ordinances too. I don't think it's going to be that bad. I think it'll be fine.
So we need a motion?
So you need a motion to direct staff to prepare an ordinance, correct?
The consensus of the committee would be.
I'm fine.
Is there a motion to that extent?
You can do a motion or just pull the board if you like, just to give staff direction.
Oh, so we don't need a formal motion?
Formal motion, you do not.
Because they're just going to be preparing the ordinance anyway, okay.
You'll be voting on the ordinance. This is just the directing staff.
Anybody have any objections? No hearing none then, go ahead. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Next item. Pickle Mall special use and associated appearance approval for Pickle Mall Town Line Commons, five fifty-five Town Line Road.
And I will be handling this one as well. Pickle Mall in the former Toys R Us unit has been in front of the committee somewhat recently. And since that time, did have their formal public hearing with the planning and zoning commission. The package following the committee presentation evolved somewhat. The petitioner did include exterior elevation modifications that were sort of hinted at in the committee of the whole without detail behind it. So they have since provided detail, which is one of the later slides, illustrating how the facade would be freshened up, be a light white, lighter paint color gradient effect on the existing columns, new signage, painting of the, the Mansard area. So this is the, the main exterior change. The, the planning and zoning commission did recommend approval of this. I do have representatives of the property ownership here if you do have questions. But just to highlight the planning and zoning commission recommendation, there was a condition of approval related to the parking lot resurfacing, as well as one related to bike racks to be installed to the left of the main entrance that you see here. Just one staff request regarding the wording of the condition. We don't have the full scope of the proposed parking lot improvements yet. So what we'd like to do is modify the verbiage of the first condition from the planning and zoning recommendation to allow some flexibility to work with staff on this. And it would read that the parking lot maintenance be completed prior to the opening of the business with the final scope subject to agreement with the village engineer. Other than that, we have no, no comment, no additional modification suggested to the planning and zoning commission recommendation. With that, Mitch Goltz from GW Properties, the property owner is here to answer questions.
Can I ask, so when you say the final scope of the parking lot, what, what is it that you're concerned about that you still, that the village engineer needs?
The original planning and zoning commission recommendation was based on a condition of approval suggested about a year ago in the sign and landscape upgrade. It was a technical review done by the engineering technician. That language has been carried forward. We don't have a proposal in our hands yet from the property owner that explains exactly what work is going to be done. So rather than, rather than have a specific requirement, what we're suggesting is allow them to present the bids to us, let us review it specifically, the village engineer, and, and come to an agreement as to what the appropriate scope of the work would be.
Okay. But you're still going to insist that, that it all gets done before this particular business opens?
Yes, it's just the extent in, in what type of repairs need to be made. We just wanted to have some flexibility rather than what was specifically written so that there were no surprises when this came back of what was going to be agreed upon as to what type of repairs needed to be done throughout the parking lot.
Well, because one of the problems is the parking lot extends significantly beyond this particular tenant, correct?
Yeah, that, it's well said by Chris and Andrew. We, so we, we, my company, we own the former Toys R Us. That said, there's another owner who has the, the former Petco and there's the owner of the larger shopping center. So when the original project came forward last year for the landscaping and signage, you know, we were here kind of joint, in joint forces. But this, this commitment that we're making is to the property that we, we control. And we, we, we're working through an assessment on what scope we need to be done here. We'd like to coordinate future improvements with the other owners. But the condition for this particular application is stuff within our control. We simply want to work with staff to make sure the right scope is, is articulated and we're very close. We do plan on getting the work done this year. But that, that's really the only clarification we wanted to make here.
Well, in looking at your drawing, it should be fairly easy to come up with a.
Yeah, this isn't a.
A general outline of what.
Right, it, this isn't, it just needs to get done. We have, we have three or four different vendors looking at the scope to kind of come up with a consensus and we'll, we'll relay it back to the village and staff to, to work with us before the work gets completed.
So are you suggesting that they would not resurface the entire parking lot at the same time? They would only do your portion?
We only control what we can control and, and the access drives are really the largest area of concern. The whole lot does not need to be redone in its whole. We will be seal coating, striping, making all repairs, cutting out a lot of it down to the two inches. So we're, we're not looking to get out of the, any scope, but do want to make sure that it's clarified. It's for the, the property that within our control.
So does your extent of the parking lot, is that defined by the lines on this survey map that we got in the pack?
Yeah.
The land title survey map?
Correct, yes. Correct. And we'll be, we'll be doing something on all that, on all the services within our lot. And, and staff had, and I believe it's the same exhibit within your, your packet, so.
So that plot survey that we're looking at, you are looking to cut and, cut pieces out, patch it and then seal coat versus tearing out a new lot, tearing out and putting a whole new lot in there?
It's a combination of all those items. Part of, some of the areas are, the integrity is, is, is good and needs to be, you know, repaired, seal coated and striped. And other areas need to be cut out two inches, two to three inches and then put back down, seal coating that way. That's the, we're working through that with the vendors right now. Particularly the access drives are most likely the areas that are, are of been greatest concern. We were out there earlier and agree with that assessment. So we're, we're simply trying to narrow down the specifics so we can come to the village with a, with an exhibit to review, so.
Well, would this be then worded, you know, the, subject to staff or I mean, subject to staff approval or, you know, satisfy staff with it, anything short of that would have to come back or somehow or?
If there is not agreement reached, sure, it could come back. But the, the verbiage that I'm suggesting is that the parking lot maintenance be completed prior to the opening of the business with the final scope, subject to the agreement with the village engineer.
Okay.
Who will be responsible for the parking lot once the doors open at Pickle Mall?
We will be responsible with the tenant reimbursing for, for maintenance, but we're, we would be responsible for that.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the board?
I mean, I would like, I don't know if this is possible, but I mean, I'd like to see what the improvement plans are going to be. Like what parts are going to be replaced, what parts are going to be cut out? I mean, I'm through that parking lot every other day. I'm just, I would be, is that something we can ask for?
Well, are you, well, that's, that's what I think staff's asking for. Are you comfortable with staff approving that as opposed to coming back to board? Because that's, that is what staff's requesting, correct, is the more detailed plan on.
That's correct. And I think the, due to the fact that we haven't yet seen anything, we wanted to change this to have some flexibility to be able to figure it out and work with it.
I guess you can certainly contact trustee Schenk to let him know when, when you get those plans without having to bring it to the board, say, this is what we've got.
And we will have AED devices inside, so.
I would, thank you for beating me to the punch on that.
The person that's going to need it thanks you in advance. The person that's gonna need it thanks you in advance. You just won't know that person until-
Yes.
And just for the record, we, we do wanna move as, as fast as possible. We did agree to keep Dix there through into the year. Um, that's their busiest season, so as eager as we and Pickle Mall are, uh, just given the lead time-
It'll be after the first of the year.
So we will-
Well, approximately, have any idea of approximately when you would like to have this open?
So ideally, we would take possession back after the holidays, let Dix do their, you know, warehouse, warehouse sale, and then they would start work beginning in January with all their permits in hand, and, but their goal is to open by middle to end of February. So we, unfortunately with the holidays, you lose three weeks anyways. If they start in November, it's, it's, you lose three, three weeks. So we agreed that the best course of action was to let Dix run it through the end of the year. They obviously do, do well during the holidays, and then take it over January, hopefully guns and plays in, and then, uh, get open, uh, while the weather's still pretty-
After this hit the newspaper, that was the single most often asked question I received.
It's, it could, it's a good thing to be asked, um, and I think they're eager, but I think we wanna just work within the confines of some of the other outside factors. So, um, but they're eager to get going, they know the demand's here. I know they're already working out to the village on some coordination things, and, uh, will continue to do so.
The rendering that I see here, um, showing the chairs, that little lounge area, previously the, rendering that one, yes. Previously that had a little juice bar or something there?
They, they will have a, a food and beverage component, but I think they get out to market as soon as possible. They don't wanna bring in any elements that might be, you know, scrutinized more through Health Department and whatnot. So they wanna get open and then kind of feel, feel the feedback from, from the demand, but there will be a food and beverage component for sure, so. At some point, they may come back at a later date, but they don't want that to hold up.
Sure.
Opening, which it would absolutely hold up with all the other agencies that could get, get to see that, so.
But, but they'll make sure that they have access for appropriate-
Of course, of course, and this, I mean, like, this is a rendering, I mean, they, they, they wanted to get through this step and get focused on getting, uh, gear up to get open, but I think with this extra time they have from now until when they start, it'll give them some, some other opportunities to assess, you know, what they wanna bring in here. They, they're eager to get open and, uh, uh, but they, they will definitely make sure this is the most state-of-the-art with all the bells and whistles that, uh, people would like to see, so.
Excellent.
Okay.
Yeah, my, my-
Yes, sir.
Is regarding, this is to, uh, Chris, uh, Van Aden. What's the structural number that this, uh, parking lot has to be built to? What, you know, what about trucks to drive through these?
I'm sorry, can you, can you say that one more time?
Chris?
Yes.
Are you listening? What, what's the structural engineering number that this has to be built to, these roads?
With regard to heavier trucks and stuff, yeah, what trucks?
With traffic, um, I, I don't have that information off, on the top of my head right now. I mean, um, the use, based on what is going in here, is not a substantially changed use from, uh, other types of shopping centers. Um, so it's a, I think generally the construction of the parking lot, um, from a, from a total reconstruction standpoint, it should be adequate. It's not like we're, um, adding something where there's gonna be much larger vehicles coming through this area. Uh, but based on the age and the condition, um, there's definitely gonna need to be varying levels of resurfacing or reconstruction through some of these, these locations. And again, just to reiterate, um, the whole reason we had this conversation about it is the fact that I haven't yet seen a plan, so I don't know what, um, the, it's a, more of a scheduling thing than anything of coming tonight before we are able to see what the improvements they're suggesting and have an opportunity to comment on them and give our feedback. But I don't expect there to be any major, uh, structural adjustments to the, the parking lot. It's deteriorating due to age, in my opinion.
And if we need to make a change to, regarding the asphalt thickness, you'll address that?
Yes, that is correct. I will give my recommendations on what needs to be done, um, once we see his plan, based on my field observations as well.
Yeah, basically, we're asking if this meet, meets staff's, you know, staff's, whatever staff's recommendations are, meets it, and it, yeah.
What about at the, uh, at the back of the building, the, the truck entrance route there and the loading dock, um, area? Does that fall into this purview in terms of fixing that area?
That's part of our scope, too.
Is that, okay.
I mean, and I'll tell you, if I may, if you've been out there, I mean, there's, there's, there's been, at least in recent years, since we've owned, there's been far more truck traffic than there should be. Uh, we had issues last year where there was just abandoned trucks. There's one there now on the neighboring lot. I mean, there should be no trucks on that front drive, really, in any circumstance. So, uh, I think that the main access drives have deteriorated a little bit more than they should have. Uh, the upkeep before we became owners was, was probably less than ideal. Um, but, uh, we do wanna bring it up to, to current standards and, and, and obviously do what we can to curb any bad behavior of, of drivers that would be deteriorating this quicker than, than should be, so.
But who's, who's-
You know, again, Chris?
Go ahead, Ray.
I mean, we're gonna look at the source, too, right?
Yes, we always look at, based on their plan, what they submit, we check the different structures, the drainage structures, make recommendations on any repairs that may need to be done. Um, so it, that, that's also included in any, um, you know, parking lot restoration project.
Okay.
So you're looking for a motion to prepare an ordinance again, or?
Yeah, just the consensus of the committee, uh, to, to prepare the ordinance, uh, with the, uh, with that condition reworded as discussed.
Including the conditions about the, the bike rack and the, everything else?
That's correct, a- and this, this ordinance, just to be clear, also does, uh, address the building and use conversion certificate. We've included as a recital in, uh, in recent ordinances that had the same, uh, application associated with it. So it would be both things.
Okay.
Just pull the individual board members?
Yeah, um, Trustee Shank? Trustee, I want to-
Sure.
Trustee Forster? Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Looking forward to seeing you soon.
Very excited.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, next item is the, a concept review Yard House, 950 Milwaukee Avenue. Again, Director Jennings?
Thank you, let me just move this ahead. Okay, thanks. Um, the, uh, Darden Restaurant Group is proposing a, uh, a new restaurant um, in the southernmost of the three lots, uh, the outlots at the Hawthorne Mall property, uh, along Milwaukee Avenue. Uh, this is the lot that would be south of the Perry Steakhouse, which is under construction. So two lots south, right along the, the access where the light is, across from Melody Farm. Um, the, uh, you have the description of the, um, the proposal in this memo. I think what I'd like to do is actually have the, the group come up and make their presentation. Uh, there are a couple of staff comments I'd like to save for the end, but, uh, at this point, I'd like to, uh, ask the representatives of the project to come up and introduce yourselves and go through the, the quick, uh, overview of the, of the project.
Trustees and Mayor Byrne, uh, thank you for your time this evening. Uh, my name's Sam Whitebread, uh, I work for Centennial Real Estate. We are the owner and operator of the Hawthorne Mall redevelopment. Uh, tonight, we are pleased to, uh, to present yet another exciting new facet of our, our continued, uh, redefined campus. Um, in, in presenting to you this evening Yard House, we have with us, um, Daniel Grove with Kimley Horn, who is our land engineer and civil engineering group, and then a representative consultant of Yard House. Uh, and we'd be happy to, to walk through the plans, present the, the latest, most exciting opportunity in our, our trio of out parcel lineups along Milwaukee Avenue, and, uh, answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Sam. My name's Daniel Grove, uh, project manager with Kimley Horn, again, uh, joined by Joe Mayer, uh, with Kimley Horn, uh, representing Darden. Um, just to give a, a, get you situated to the site, um, as Andrew mentioned, uh, Perry's is taking lot, Outlet One along Milwaukee Avenue at the north. Centennial is, is actively working for a tenant on Lot Two, and then the subject site where Yard House is proposed is at the south end of those three lots, uh, right across from the entrance to Phase One, um, which is almost complete. We were in front of you, uh, just a few weeks ago regarding the plot of subdivision. Um, so this is Outlet Three of that plot of subdivision at the south end, uh, which is just over eighty-four thousand square feet. I'm gonna turn this over to Joe to, uh, walk through the proposed site plan.
Thank you, Daniel. Uh, my name is Joe Mayer, I'm with Kimley Horn, sorry to confuse you. Daniel and I are with the same company, but I'm here specifically on behalf of Darden. I can talk a little bit about, uh, their brand and, and why they like the site and why they've situated it, uh, as they have. Um, but as Daniel mentioned, we're situated on the south side of that lot with, uh, you know, uh, Yard House's, uh, front door facing north, where the majority of the parking lot is. Um, and then there's been a lot of effort, uh, to, to place this building such that there's a cohesive and pedestrian-friendly, um, connectiveness, uh, to the rest of the mall. Um, and you can see that with the addition of the Beer Garden and the Plaza that's situated on the west side of the site. Um, I think staff can get into a little bit of the numbers as far as parking and access. Um, but Darden, um, feels confident that they have enough parking to serve this use, both the, uh, both the building and the patio. Um, if you can flip to the next slide, I'll, I'll kind of breeze over some of the other site plan details, but I'm happy to answer questions later. The, uh, the consulting team, the project architect is not here today, but they've worked with staff to come up with, uh, a set of renderings and elevations that they feel like are a good complement both to the mall and, and the village's standards, as well as the brand that, that Yard House wants to present and be consistent with the rest of their portfolio. Um, so you'll see through the elevations, there's a mix of, uh, brick veneer, hardy plank, um, some fascia for the, for the dumpster and, and, uh, ephes as an accent material. Um, but this, the elevation that's in front of you right now is the, the front elevation, which will be facing north. And if you don't mind continuing through. Uh, this would be the west elevation that faces, um, the rest of the, the center. Um, and you can see the incorporation of the Beer Garden, as well as the Plaza area with the tower feature on the left. As we get to the, the south elevation, this is the Mall Drive, it's intended to be screened, um, with limited pedestrian connectivity. Uh, and that, that southeast corner is kind of the back of house and operations for, for Darden. But they're doing, um, I think, a goo- a good job of, uh, you know, having four-sided architecture as well as, um, complimenting landscape, landscape areas. And this is the final elevation, which would face Milwaukee, the, the east side.
Um, and, yeah, we can always come back with questions, but summary board of the, of the proposed materials by the architect. Um, I just wanted to touch on the landscape a little bit. Um, as Joe mentioned, you know, we, we're looking to really make connections across to Hawthorne Row. So Hawthorne Row at that southeast corner of that development, um, has the synthetic turf plaza. Um, and then, you know, the, the plan for Yard House is to respond to that, you know, building off of the, uh, Beer Garden, which would be fenced in and enclosed, um, and then having, uh, open plaza space just to the west of the Beer Garden. Uh, foundation landscape, parking lot landscape to meet code, um, and exceed code in some spots. Um, you know, we recognize that there's, um, you know, the, because as Joe mentioned, the, the challenge of the site and the location placing the building, placing parking, placing access, we do end up, uh, with service on that east side, so we are looking to screen that uh, heav- heavily with landscape, as well as the, um, the, um, stone wall that, uh, was shown on the architectural elevations. Uh, additionally, we'll have landscape and, and a, a short retaining wall, um, continuing up along, uh, Milwaukee Avenue at the edge of the parking lot. Um, the existing monument sign is down in that southeast corner, um, and we would kind of loop that into the landscape bed and, and create some, uh, foundation landscape around the sign as well. We also have, um, you know, grading and utility plans that we can speak to if you have any questions. But with that, um, that's just kind of our brief overview, and happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions from the board?
So, is this the sidewalk on the south end of the, of the lot?
So there's a, there's an existing sidewalk that's a, a carriage walk along the, the mall entrance, so the intent is to keep that. There'll be just a single sidewalk connection from the Beer Garden to it, but really, the, the rest of the sidewalk improvements are intended to be centered on Hawth- Hawthorne Center.
Sam, I'm not following that.
Oh, sorry. Um, maybe to better understand your question, can you ask it another way? I don't, I don't know that I caught it.
My question is, can someone from the apartment go all the way across Milwaukee on sidewalk to Melody Farm on the south end of your building?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so it will be totally connected to the Milwaukee Avenue sidewalk?
Right.
As well as a south sidewalk across your property line, and then connect with the sidewalk's interior?
That's correct.
I, I just couldn't tell with the, the material that you show there in, in the Beer Garden and to the west, like, is that a concrete wall or, or?
Yeah, so there will-
That black and white stippled area?
Yeah, there will be new, uh, hardscape improvements at the intersection, um, at that southwest corner, but there is existing sidewalk along the rest of the southern frontage.
Right.
So there is, we'll maintain the connection.
But that hardscape is-
New.
Is just flat pedestrian, it's not a wall, okay.
It's a flat plaza, I mean, we, we have yet to fully design it, but-
Okay.
The idea with that, that would be a plaza that could be complimentary to the, to the, to the building and the Beer Garden. The Beer Garden, conceptually right now, is synthetic turf, which would be ADA accessible and easy to navigate as well.
The, the sidewalk that's existing, you have two different shades there. You have, like, the gray, and then, like, the much lighter gray. But the width is, is the same width as your, what you're adding on in the southwest. So is that one wider side, one wide sidewalk, or a narrow sidewalk with some kind of?
So, uh, immediately south of the building, there is an existing sidewalk in a grass parkway.
In grass.
And then as we get to the corner, we're, we're taking that sidewalk out to, to the corner to create more of an urban streetscape, similar to what's across the street in, in Hawthorne Row.
That's, I, I mean, is that sidewalk, I mean, that's the grand entrance into Hawthorne, more or less, right? Is that sidewalk wide enough for what we want? Or is it just gonna be like a little, you know, you're going from a little sidewalk to a big sidewalk? I mean, obviously you have the grass median, um, the landscaping there to south there. Do we want a wider sidewalk?
I mean, make it, make it that, the same as what's in the southwest, doing it all the way, all the way for the whole south end of it?
I mean, we don't, we would love to see traffic walking back and forth between Melody Farms and Hawthorne Mall, right? You know, strollers, things like that, wider.
It, it is a, I mean, it is a six-foot wide-
It is a six-foot wide sidewalk?
So it-
So you got like a twelve-foot wide side then, sidewalk then?
Yeah, you're probably about right.
Well, there's a ten-foot, it's a ten-foot sidewalk easement along Milwaukee. So that's why it's about a six-foot, if you, if you look at the-
On Milwaukee, right? But as we come up, so we're saying the concrete will be six feet wide?
Yeah.
South of the building, and then, yeah, widen out at the-
Chris, what's our sidewalk widths in town, neighborhoods, like four?
Uh, there are some locations that are four, typically we go with five. That's, that's gonna be your standard residential sidewalk.
Seems kind of narrow for the grand entrance into Hawthorne Mall. I like what you guys are doing, the southwest corner, I mean, that looks great. It'd be great to, I don't know, find some way to carry it over so it doesn't look like, I'm not saying it's hodgepodge, 'cause you don't, can't really see the landscaping that's going to be there. Is the eighty-eight, looks like about eighty-eight hundred square feet, is that nine thousand square feet, the building? Your other lo- you got, like, Yard House and Glenview comparison size-wise?
Yeah, generally speaking, they're around the eight to nine thousand square feet.
So it's the standard size Yard House?
That's correct.
As you have, and any idea what, um, how big Perry's is in square footage? Eleven thousand feet? And that's not inclu- that's interior, right? That's not including their patio and the, in your patio, too. Why did you choose, actually, let me back up. So lot, you have a, you had a picture of the three lots, can you, it's near the end. Okay, so-
Or we can-
That's fine. Actually, can we go to, that's the other one with the colors? Thank you very much. So as we get into somebody taking over a lot, too, what kind of places can go in there that can have that part, like, a building plus the parking? Are we gonna have issues there with who can go in there? Type of businesses that can't go in there?
Absolutely, no, it's a very good question. Uh, we actually have a, we're in meaningful conversation with a prospect, uh, restaurant operator right now that is, um, breakfast buffet, uh, breakfast, uh, brunch, uh, focused. And we believe that that creates some, you know, given their business hours, with Perry's being primarily evening, Yard House being lunch into evening, a breakfast, uh- being primarily evening, Yardhouse being lunch into evening, a breakfast, a breakfast style concept would allow us to maximize parking and have some.
More cross easement on the parking.
And shared parking.
Will you have, I can't remember, we had this conversation. Will you have, once you're in the parking lots of Perry's, can you drive all the way to Yardhouse in the parking lot?
Yes.
So, and there's gonna be shared easement agreements between the property owners of the parking, who takes here the property?
That is the intent.
And what happens when the breakfast place decides not to be breakfast one day and wants to be dinner? Just hypothetical, right?
Sure.
Is there enough parking for the size building that they could build on that lot?
Across, across the three sites, we believe that there are.
Okay. But do all three tenants have to be in agreement with that?
We're structuring the legal lease agreements in such a way. And as a matter of fact, our conversations on Lot Two right now, as of today and leading into the weekend, we're focused on exactly the subject. The Prospect Operator wants to make sure exactly of all the points you're making.
And I make a point as Yardhouse saying, your traffic screwed up my lot or something. I mean, you know what I'm saying? It's just like, what's the shared expense there?
The same too. Surprisingly, we've been able to successfully address the concerns that the restaurant operators believe they can coexist alongside one another. A couple of them have been most interested to know what's happening with the residential units across the way and making sure we have, we have proper delineation to keep any of the residential guests or tenants from parking on there and the ability to enforce such. So that's also been part of the conversation to make sure.
Yeah, you can definitely see, you know, with those stores being, you know, right there, access, that's going to be an issue. There's no doubt about it.
Parking enforcement is a.
If you build it, they will come, right?
That's true, for good or bad.
Yeah, right. So I noticed Perry's on the northern and Yardhouse on the southern. Was that by design to create that more space for Lot Two to have more parking? Like, who chose the southern end of the lot? Yardhouse or?
Yardhouse. When we entered conversation with them, they.
Oh, it's a good, it's the entrance. Who wants to drive in and see a parking lot?
Yeah.
Because then they're gonna park there.
Front door of the project, very much so. And the fact that they were pretty proactive in helping us to further design the site in a good way, as they've overviewed with the outdoor area. The outdoor area was not originally conceived as part of the trio of lineup we had for other reasons, just envisioned these to be standalone out parcels. When Yardhouse came to us and it showed interest in the site, they said, we love this, but we want to be connected to Hawthorne Row Campus Project in a meaningful way. And as such, we would like to mirror some of the finishes that we see on the west side of the project to our, to our front door. So that's kind of the concept in the background on how we got to the outdoor plaza areas.
And Phase Three will be where under the word Phase One is, is that correct? More or less? So you butt up against that parking lot there now, south of Phase, the Phase One, just below.
That's a future development area. Now, I don't know that we.
We haven't really named it anything yet?
Yeah, and we, obviously, we haven't pursued entitlements for such.
But Phase Two is?
Phase Two is in the middle of the page, and actually, I think the cursor. Phase Two is in the middle of the page and sits mostly on the former Carson's Lot.
Thank you.
So I see there is the existing walkway there right now, the sidewalk. So you decided to only do half of it with the new material and leave half or three-quarters of it as existing?
I mean, it would just, it all would likely be concrete. So you're saying that, yeah, I mean, there is an existing sidewalk that encircles all three of those outlots today. And then, conceptually, you know, as we transition into the corner and transition towards Hawthorne Mall, you know, we're making a transition at that Beer Garden and widening out the sidewalk. You know, our anticipation is that most of the pedestrians, you know, aren't gonna be, there will be some, we hope and encourage, you know, traffic to come across from Melody Farms, but, you know, most of the traffic, pedestrian traffic arriving and leaving Yardhouse would either be from the parking lot or going into the shopping area to the west.
Yeah, just as Trustee Shank mentioned, this is the welcoming entrance right there. So we do want to make sure it looks as good as possible. And I just don't, I'm not sure what's better to have grass there with a smaller sidewalk or have it all of.
One part to recall that's probably relevant to this conversation is, in collaboration with the Village, last year, we completed the pedestrian, all the pedestrian ramps were replaced both here and to the south on the former Denny's site. So all this sidewalk and approachway is all new, are new improvements that are currently in place as of last year.
The sidewalk on Milwaukee currently exists, correct? That's all currently there and this will all tie into it.
Will you, are you planning on having underground irrigation at this time?
Darden does tip, sorry, I'm saying Darden, but they are the parent company of Yardhouse. But they do typically irrigate their sites.
Will they irrigate that grass strip just south of the sidewalk?
That would be a question for Sam, because I think typically, it's their foundation plantings is where they focus on it.
I would say where we have green turf and there's a need to be irrigated, our intent is consistent with the rest of the project, first class from top to bottom, and irrigation's part of that mindset.
So are you irrigating all along Milwaukee Avenue then? And pretty much wherever there's grass, you have underground, you'll have underground irrigation?
I don't know about the borderline or the buffer along Milwaukee and the easement area, but onsite with the individual campuses where there's landscaping that requires our turf. But then also, just friendly reminder, a large part of our campus improvements are, over here, are synthetic turf.
I saw that.
Yeah.
Other questions or concerns from the board?
You guys got good nachos.
So tonight, you're looking for direction to?
Looking for direction to work with them on the technical review supplemental. And part of that direction, I just want to be clear, the, based on the conceptual site plan, we do anticipate a need for a setback variation on the south. They've designed it thus far to reflect the variation that was approved as part of the Melody Farm development. So it's a similar tight setback to that entrance. And I just want to make sure that we call that out now, because as they get into this next phase, if there's not consensus to move forward with that, this would be a good time to provide that feedback. They still need to go through the formal public hearing process, but this is the stage where they do start to spend more money on the design.
So how does the setback compare or the view distance from the street, the center line of the street to this building compared to further west?
It's, so from this point east or this point west?
West.
Uh, gosh, this point west, on the, you've got a very large plaza that kind of narrows as you hit the Hawthorne Row retail. The concern that I had had is really right along the Milwaukee area. You're near Milwaukee, it's got a, you can see the Melody Farm building is fairly close. So this is designed to be similar to that setback, so close to the entrance drive. And I just wanted to make sure that the developer was getting feedback specific to that, so that as they prepare.
But it's mostly the southern and eastern that are gonna need the variation.
Correct, and very similar to the setbacks that were approved with Melody Farm.
Well, and wasn't there a similar one to the north with Perry's as well, I think?
Perry's is further west. It doesn't have a significant.
I mean, the northern edge of it, I thought was a little close to Ring, but maybe not.
No, I think it's, I think it's got a, it probably has actually a complying setback.
What's the setback room? Is it 60 feet?
It's 60 from Milwaukee and 40 from the side.
And as designed, what do we have here?
I don't recall exactly what it is. I didn't put it in here, did I?
And it's 40 from the curb?
40 from the property line.
40 from the property?
Looks to me it's like maybe even 40 feet.
How far is the setback?
Sure, sorry, I was letting him finish. It's 40 feet or 41 feet from Milwaukee, and I believe it's 15 feet off of the entrance drive.
And how high is the building on the south side? What's the elevation height at its highest point?
I apologize, I don't know that. I'll stop my head, but I can get that answer for you.
If you were to estimate?
30 feet.
Well, according to this drawing, that one southern entrance is 14 and a half feet, 14 feet from the sidewalk. So add another six, it's gonna be about 20 some feet from the curb. It's gonna be probably more like about 25 feet.
So probably from where David's standing to those windows, that's what you're gonna be looking at from Hawthorne Row, if he turned around. About 30 feet and you're about 15 feet away. So as you walk in, is it too close?
On this elevation you're looking at now?
I think, is 15 feet? I mean, just talk about the southern setback. He's right, I mean, we're right, 15 feet is pretty tight.
Well, it's.
I mean, and it's 15 feet from the part that juts out or is it 15 feet from?
It's, according to the one drawing we got in the packet, it was 14 feet from the corner of the building to the edge of the sidewalk, 14 feet, two inches, right down there where the hand is.
So that's 14 feet.
From the corner of the building to the sidewalk edge.
You can see the sidewalk kind of.
And then you've got the sidewalk is another.
Yeah, oh, 14, I see.
That is to the property line, and so there's another, you know, 10 to 12 foot varying with Parkway.
And varying, and the ordinance is 40?
The ordinance is 40 and the.
And this is about 25, so.
Wait, where's 25? This is 15.
To the sidewalk, and then you've got five feet of sidewalk and another five feet.
But the ordinance is from the property line, correct? 40 feet from the property line, Andrew?
Correct.
So let's just kind of apples to apples.
Where is the property line in relation to that red line on the?
The red line is.
That is the red line.
Red line is, so it's 15 feet, okay.
And I think the question I was just trying to ask is, having seen Melody Farm, once it's constructed, obviously that variance was approved as part of the PUD.
Correct.
Now that everyone has had an opportunity to see what it looks like in real life, is that sort of setback off that, the entrance drive, is that something that everyone's comfortable with replicating in this development? Or is there a discomfort with the placement of that building? And we can work with them on the exact numbers, but the idea that I was trying to get at in this memo was, is that sort of development something that everyone is comfortable with pursuing again?
But sort of which, which part of Melody Farm are you referring to?
Whole Foods and, right as you go into Whole Foods, that's always with, well within 20 feet of the.
Just kind of the similar spot across.
Right down there at the bottom too, where Whole Foods and the other building right there, those are both very close to the entrance. I mean, look at how close that building on the north side of the entrance way is to the entrance way.
What's Perry's? On the, let's try to hear, on the north edge and the east edge, do we have any idea what their setbacks are?
They have parking area wrapping around the building. So it's that corner, I would say, isn't probably the best example. The Melody Farm is really the comparable for this.
Can you match the Milwaukee Avenue setback to Perry's? So they kind of look like they're in line versus, granted, that Lot Two could be a smaller building, I mean, who knows, right? But do we want them, is it more appealing to have the front facades facing Milwaukee Avenue closer in line?
Well, at that distance, they're not, they're not right next to each other. I think because the parking does wrap fully around on Perry's there, you know, this building is oriented east-west, whereas Perry's is square, but I would say more north-south orientation. And again, I'm just trying to make sure that there's some direction, if there is a consensus to do one thing or the other, that they hear it before they enter the next phase.
And there's no entrance on the south side of the building, so there'd be no benefit to wrapping parking like Perry's has, correct?
Correct. And I would, I guess I'd like to point out that the 40-foot that we were talking about is to the wall around the service area. And then the 60-foot line is back here, so the mass of the building, the habitable building, is closer to that 60-foot setback.
How tall is the wall? 10 feet?
Eight, I would guess.
Yeah, it looks at about seven, about eight.
Okay.
So this, this area back here is much closer to 60 feet. And then this dark gray here is what's sitting at like 41.
What's in like garbage corrals and things like that in that area?
Are they interior?
Yeah, there's garbage corrals behind that wall, as well as some loading areas for delivery.
What do you do for your roof line, like for the compressor, like for the condenser units on the roof?
There will be.
Were they shielded?
Yeah, parapet wall and shielding.
Does the, does the south end of the building have to be the same height as the east side? Can you stagger it from what? Where is it already?
Yeah, I think there's varying elevations. There is the intent to have that corner entry kind of tower feature at the southeast corner, understanding that it is the entry to the mall. I'm wanting to have something prominent at the corner with some signage on it.
Is the Beer Garden only denoted in the green, where like the concrete is something else?
Yeah, that's correct. I'll go back to the landscape plan. The Beer Garden will be screened and fenced. It's intended to be completely separate from the Plaza area.
And what's the Plaza area's purpose?
For some expanded pedestrian use. Sam, I can maybe let you hit.
I think mostly it's just connectivity to mirror what's going on on the west side of the street with Hawthorne Row, and then to have some congregating or area to increase dwell time. Really, the goal of the project is everything kind of pedestrian forward, and anything we can do to create some environments where pedestrians might spend a little more time congregating, that would, that would be the goal.
The reason why I ask, because if we were to gain 10 more feet of setback from Milwaukee, you wouldn't really lose your Beer Garden. The question is, how much of the pedestrian area would you lose? Obviously 10 feet, but I don't know how wide it is right now.
We are somewhat constrained by that storm sewer easement that cuts north-south across this. So we can only push so far before we get in.
Where's the, is that that rectangle, long rectangle, the dotted line there?
Yeah, it extends all the way across. And so at some point, we'll get into a conflict with foundations and easements. And certainly something we can look at, but that's our limiting factor for the building.
I mean, putting a Beer Garden over the storm sewer, is that what the concern is then?
I think there's a maintenance obligation for that easement and significant infrastructure on top of it. Maybe let Village staff speak more clearly to that.
It's just, it's not a good practice to build a fixed hardscapes on top of utility infrastructure.
Storm sewer easement.
You ever have to service it or replace it, now you're tearing through an area that's developed.
Isn't there concrete going over it in the plan or?
The intent is that's under the hardscape and the Plaza, as opposed to the Beer Garden surface, which is more of a synthetic turf and patio seating and furniture and.
And then the walls?
Yeah.
Can you go back one slide with the sewer?
Which way did you want to go?
The previous.
This?
So, yeah. So chances are Lot Two's gonna stick their building right over the sewer.
Currently, the locations that we're looking at for a footprint are either immediately to the east or immediately to the west. I think currently, we're looking at immediately to the east and keeping it out of that zone.
Great efforts have been put forth to avoid this, this underground storm line. It's massive. It's a 72-inch line, and the value to relocate that line, based on some of our initial studies two to three years ago, before we ever brought this forward, were almost cost prohibitive that the project didn't pencil once you start digging up that sizable of a long run relocating it. So everything is kind of laying out around that line.
Around that particular thing.
So you're gonna have like a 4,000 square foot building there then? Lot Two, is that probably close?
The middle path's gonna be smaller in comparison to the other two.
And then you're gonna be looking for an easement again, for a variance again for the setback probably, right?
We were able to hold it to the, in our.
I mean, if you're 60, I'm gonna say if you're 60 feet and then you're moving east of that sewer.
The 60-foot line is kind of right in here.
Right.
So, I mean, in our test fits, we were able to keep the building, kind of thread that needle.
I don't know, do you guys think that's too close to the southern edge there? The 15, the setback? Are you guys okay with that?
Not in comparison when you compare it to the other stuff in the area, because across the street is, across the street is, I think even tighter. That one building right across the street, the one on the north side of that entrance is...
What was it? That was the burger place, right?
Across the street from Whole Foods is really, really tight.
Yeah, where the cellular place and...
Do you guys like how it looks? Like, if you were able to do a do-over? Splitting hairs?
Well, the difference, though, is that that's not, that's not a pedestrian path in my mind versus this project is right on the main entrance.
Yeah, as long as you've got that 15-foot setback to the sidewalk itself, that would be, I mean, that, it would be, I'd be more concerned about encroaching on the sidewalk. Again, this, correct me if I'm wrong, one of the things is to go with the slightly more urban feel of the area that has, you know, and a more urban feel, setbacks are not as huge as they've been out here in the burbs for many years.
Yeah, I think, again, to enforce that walkable environment and, you know, cut down on those distances. You know, as long as we can landscape it really nicely, and I believe we can in that space that we're showing.
And I think the landscape, looking at that landscape plan, I think that'll help ease some of the concerns about, you know...
And it's, and it does have different heights to the building at the south end, so it doesn't, doesn't appear to be one monolith, the wall.
I mean, look, I mean, Melody Farms Lazy Dog is setback farther from, I don't know what that's over there.
Yeah.
The majority of them, like the corners, Whole Foods and Lazy Dog are setback.
Well, even their north edge is very, very tight to that street going across.
Right there?
Yeah. Almost all those buildings along Milwaukee are very, very close to the entrances off Milwaukee.
Yeah, anytime I look at when we have an ordinance in place and we're looking for a variance, it should be scrutinized a little bit because there's a reason why that ordinance was placed.
Yeah. And since this is not really a, totally a PUD-type thing like that was across the street, so... Other questions, concerns? So you're looking for direction to...
To work with them to proceed the technical review and then on to the planning and zoning. This is, the mechanics of this would be similar to Perrys.
Because I'm sure that will all come up with planning and zoning too, so...
This ends up being an amendment to the mall PUD, similar to how Perrys was approved. So it is a public hearing. It is considered a special use because it's an amendment to the PUD. So that will be how we publish it in the end. But the real-world implications of this, I want to make sure that there is a chance to discuss it first.
Yeah. Okay. No, I'm good with moving this forward.
Moving to the board again.
Yeah. Trustee Schenk?
Yeah.
Trustee Avon?
Yes.
Trustee Borster?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, let's move forward with it. Thank you.
I'll send the yes to.
Oh, yeah? Oh, yeah, sorry. So you're saying you should go ahead, right, Mayor?
You have to go, baby.
Okay. Next item then is amendments to Chapter Five, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article Nine, Property Maintenance Code.
Thank you, this one will be me as well. We're unfortunately getting close to the heating season. And we had, we had some question at the end of last year's heating season regarding the verbiage of our code requirements. So without getting into all the nitty-gritty of it, what I've recommended here is an amendment to a specific section of the Property Maintenance Code. Property Maintenance Code is a model code. The Village has adopted that model code. We have the 2018 version of the International Property Maintenance Code. It came with the whole ICC Code Suite package that we adopted, the building code, the residential code, the existing buildings code, et cetera. The Property Maintenance Code sections that relate to indoor heating requirements leave a blank for each municipality to decide what dates are appropriate for heating. In the past, we have not changed the date. We've left it blank. And we have an additional amendment where we've increased the minimum standard. It's highly unusual. Most towns do not modify the 68-degree minimum indoor heating standard. So my suggestion at this point is to go ahead and select a date to begin the heating requirement, starting October 1st, running through May 31st. In the past, our policy, although we did not actually make that code amendment, the policy's been to enforce the heating requirement from October 15th to May 15th, looking around at both the state requirements for state licensed facilities as well as our neighboring, our neighbors in Lincolnshire, Libertyville, et cetera, among the line. The date ranges go from September 1st or October 1st through April 30th or May 31st. There's not that much variation in the area. So my suggestion at this point is to select the date of October 1st as the beginning of the heating season and run through May 31st and then not modify the minimum standard of 68 degrees.
Well, the October 1st works better than, because as a general rule, May is cooler than September, by about five or six degrees, I think, so...
I mean, what's the difference if we did September versus October?
September is still quite...
I know, but what is, what is our downside if we chose September 1st?
Say that again?
What's our downside if we chose September 1st? I mean, people pay high enough rents in the, they pay high enough rents in this town, they should be...
Other than average temperature in September is somewhere in the middle to upper 70s.
This is for the landlords to make sure that they're providing the correct amount of heat for their tenants, right?
I'd have no problem going September.
I only say September because it's like...
We are in Chicago.
What's that, we're in Chicago, right?
Yeah, I mean, September.
I mean, and I noticed Libertyville is September through May 31st. Not saying that we're comparing to Libertyville, but we're fine with that. I know people, they pay high rents around here and so I would...
The only downside really to the landlords is just predictability. So beyond the first year, so a change in the first year, you may get some pushback. Some people might be irritated. They've got a maintenance schedule for the equipment. They've, they may not be happy with the initial. But once it's predictable and they can budget around and predict the dates, I don't anticipate a major issue. But September 1st is certainly done if that is the...
Well, if you were going October 1, you'd be beginning enforcing it this year, correct?
That's correct.
Could we, how can we word it so that we can go with September 1?
Next year.
With, next year with October 1 of this year?
Well, we could certainly, the next time we do a code amendment, I would recommend probably every six years, you would update and adopt the new code. So we're not that far off of actually doing that again. So that certainly opens the window for us to do that with the next coded option.
Well, because the thing is, we couldn't make it September 1 this year because that's unconstitutional. You can't retro, I'm serious, that's US Constitution. You can't make a law that goes into effect before now.
Yeah, we also have, realistically, we do have a 30-day notice period for a code update like this. So effectively, we'd be sticking with the October 15th anyway this year.
Right. I mean, I would change to September 1st and just let them know that they get a year notification. And if they're going to complain, then they can come in and talk.
So right now, it's October 15th?
Yeah.
Our policy has been October 15th to May 15th, yes.
Yeah, so we'll just say...
2024.
2024 will be September 1.
September 1 effective 24. Yeah, that sounds good.
It's just to protect them from those, you never know, with maybe a few days in September. You know, there's, yeah, it's just to protect, you know, our citizens, so...
Okay, so then this year would be just the first date that it could be effective. And then in next year would be September 1st. And we could certainly write the actual ordinance making the amendment that way, too.
This year's ordinance can cover this year and next year.
Correct.
We would cover, sure.
Right.
Yeah. You don't need any formum from...
No, just the consensus to go ahead and prepare it.
Okay.
Sure.
Yep.
Okay.
Pull the board again?
Yeah. Is everybody satisfied with the...
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor, how about you? You good with it, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, then there's nothing else on the committee of the whole and there's no co-session. So is there a motion to adjourn for the evening?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we're all in favor. Thank you and good night.